Good evening. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And welcome to those in the audience, our city staff and those viewing the meeting tonight. I'll call the meeting to order for our January 3rd City Council, regular City Council meeting. We'll start with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. Our invocation tonight is led by Pastor John McGee, Oak Harbor Seventh-day Adventist Church. Did I say that right? Okay. So if you'll stand to join us, please.
Yes. On behalf of the faith communities in Oak Harbor and our particular church family located on Highway 20, I just want to wish each one of you God's special blessing and wisdom as you carry out the business of this evening. Lord in heaven, I'm thinking of the people in this town, the teens who are prone to depression, the pilots who are under a lot of pressure, their families who are sometimes left alone for months while spouses are deployed, for those who are getting older in this community and suffering with Alzheimer's, Lord, for those who are walking the streets tonight in the bitter cold, for people who have made poor choices for which we pay taxes to keep from dying or being too sick, and for the young children who are depending upon a mom and a dad to raise them right, for our law enforcement who risk their lives to keep us safe, for this city council who attempts to do justice and also deliver mercy as needed in the decisions to make this city run well, and especially I pray for our schools, and thank you for the leadership to provide an education so that our children can grow up as good citizens, great neighbors, and for those who wish, godly people of character. I want to thank you, oh God, and ask that you will please grace us with your presence tonight in your precious and powerful name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor John. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay, item number one is the approval of the agenda. Does any one, Councilman Servadius?
Thank you Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, second by, or, motion by Councilmember Servadius and second by Muns to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're quickly on to item number two, and we have no proclamations tonight, no special honors or recognitions, but we certainly do have a community presentation. And the bet at City Hall was whether he was going to wear his birthday suit or not to the meeting tonight. Oh, I shouldn't say, I should qualify the birthday suit. It is real clothing and it's something that I saw on Facebook, a wild outfit, I'll tell you. And he's not wearing that tonight, but he did bring a guitar, I noticed. Our Oak Harbor School District Superintendent, Dr. Lance Gibbon, has a presentation.
Thanks for having me here this evening. Yeah, no, I did not wear my birthday suit. That would have been a first, I'm sure, for a city council. No, actually, I did have a Christmas suit. You can see that on Facebook. Got a chance to wear that with the kids and do some singing during the holidays. So, I want to start off by first just thanking you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and thank you so much for the partnership that we enjoy between the schools and the city of Oak Harbor. It really is a partnership to help support and serve the families here and the children in Oak Harbor, and we're just grateful for the relationship that we have. Thank you very much to the mayor and city council, all of you, for your support. It really makes a huge difference. And this evening, I'd like to talk with you about how we've been working to keep a great thing growing in Oak Harbor schools. And I say growing because of course our students are growing, our schools are growing, and really our success story is growing. And in fact, I'd like to start by taking you back in time. In fact, let's look at 2012. This is our on-time graduation rate. The blue line is Oak Harbor Public Schools and the orange line, the state average. In 2012, our on-time graduation rate was only 75 percent. So let's think about that for a second. That means that 100 out of every 400 students in Oak Harbor High School were not earning a diploma on time. And we know how important it is for the future of our students to have that high school diploma as a launching point for their future. And the fact that we were having 100 students not make that goal was not acceptable. And we set the goal back in 2013. There's a green star on there of reaching the goal of 90 percent on-time graduation by 2016. Well, something very important happened in 2013. We went out to the community and asked for their support for a levy that would allow us to restore many programs and services that have been cut due to lots of years of loss of federal funding and state funding. And sure enough, we passed that levy. Our community stepped up and supported that levy in 2013. And in 2014, that was the first year we were actually be able to begin to implement those programs and services. And look what happened to our graduation rate. Immediately, you saw a jump to 81.9 percent, and in 2015 to 85.8 percent. And this past year, 2016, our goal was 90 percent on-time graduation. Our class of 2016 graduated at a rate of 91.4 percent. And look, there's, you can see where the state average is compared with that. You know, this is, this is an amazing success story, and it's just one of a long list of unprecedented successes that are directly attributable to our community's investment through our local levy. And I've got a sheet there for each one of you that lists all of those successes. But rather than go through all of those things for you this evening, because you can certainly read through those yourselves, I want to tell you a few stories about some students and how the community's support has truly made a difference in their lives. This first student, this is Michael Washington. Michael actually played basketball for Oak Harbor High School. If you had a chance to see him play, he was an extremely talented ball player. There he is slam dunking the ball. Michael participated in a number of our advanced placement classes, and he was a part of our DECA program. That's our business and marketing program. Michael competed with our DECA team in regional competitions. They not only won the regional competitions, they won the state competitions, and they were out of 38,000 teams in America. They won the national championship in DECA. Not once, but twice, two years in a row. Was an amazing accomplishment, and Mike applied to a number of different universities. And he was selected for a pretty good school, I would say. He actually played basketball and went to Princeton University. And in fact, this past year, Mike graduated from Princeton University. And today, Michael works for Goldman Sachs, and he actually lives on Wall Street. And he would tell you that it's because of the opportunities that he experienced here in Oak Harbor that he is where he is today. We can tell you a story about another student. This is Bailey Johnston. Bailey was born with a rare chromosome disorder that resulted in her having a number of learning difficulties. She had skeletal and muscular heart issues. Needless to say, school was very difficult for Bailey. Bailey, by the time she was in high school, she really didn't know what the future held for her. She really couldn't see where she was going to be going beyond high school with the challenges that she faced. But Bailey qualified for a program that we have in Oak Harbor called the Transition Program that serves students 18 to 21 years old with moderate to severe disabilities and preparing them with job skills and life skills. Well, thanks to that program, Bailey finished at age 21 and went straight into a paying job working for Head Start as a classroom assistant out at Hand in Hand Early Learning Center. Today Bailey is serving and supporting students with disabilities just like she had. And I saw Bailey out at Hand in Hand a couple of weeks before the break, and she just loves it out there. She says, "I'm so happy to come to school every day and be able to care for these kiddos." And that success story would not have been possible without our community's support. Let me give you an example of a different student. This is Genevieve Boucher. Genevieve graduated last year from Oak Harbor High School, and she was part of our very successful culinary program at Oak Harbor. In fact, 13 out of the last 15 years, Oak Harbor's culinary program is placed first in the state. Well, Genevieve was part of a new program that we had at Oak Harbor High School, our baking program, and she actually won the state baking championship. Well, thanks to those opportunities for Genevieve, today she is at the Culinary Institute of America in New York where she won a, where she earned a scholarship, and she had a restaurant job waiting for her when she got there. And again, those things would not have been possible without our community's support and investment. But finally, this is Brianna Belts. Brianna, by the time she was in fifth grade, had attended eight different elementary schools. You see, Brianna came from a broken home. Family struggled financially, and by the time Brianna was a senior at Oak Harbor High School, she was a homeless student. But despite those challenges, Brianna enrolled in advanced placement classes. She was part of our band program. She was an officer in the NJROTC, and she was part of our Wildcat Robotics Team that this past year went to the world championships and won the Spirit Award, one of only four teams in the world to win that award. Well, thanks to the opportunities that Brianna had, as a homeless student, Brianna not only graduated this past year from Oak Harbor High School, she graduated in the top 10 in her class. And today Brianna is attending the University of Notre Dame on a full-ride scholarship. That success story would not have been possible without the opportunities that she had here in Oak Harbor schools. And these are just a few examples of the ways that our community's investment is transforming the lives of our students. Well, this evening, I'd like to share a short video with you. This is part of our Growing Higher series. You can see it on YouTube and on Facebook. But this first, this video, I enjoy this one because this highlights some of our elementary students that are part of a program that was brand-new thanks to our community's support. This is our fifth-grade ambassador program at Oak Harbor Elementary. So I'd like to sit back and have you enjoy Growing Higher featuring some of our students
Welcome back to another exciting episode of Growing Higher. Our shows have always brought you some amazing stories about Oak Harbor schools, and today is no different.
That's right. And we'll be featuring some very special fifth graders from Oak Harbor Elementary.
The new student ambassador program has been the talk of the school. We wanted to find out more, so we sent our reporter to OHE to find out the big changes.
Thanks Aurora and Emma. I am here at Oak Harbor Elementary exploring the new student ambassador program. Every Wednesday, 25th graders at Oak Harbor Elementary meet after school to make a positive difference. That difference is starting to get noticed.
At our meetings, we try to figure out ways to make our school a better place.
In addition to the Wednesday meetings, the ambassador program also has the students perform a variety of jobs throughout the school day.
We have flag people, door greeters who greet the kids who come to school every day, and PM helpers.
PM helpers are students who help teachers get afternoon jobs done.
The first-year program is advised by Sarah Myers, OHE's office assistant and webmaster.
The ambassador program is really taking off. Not only are we creating a welcoming culture here at Oak Harbor Elementary, but we're also connecting with other community groups like the senior centers so that our impact is felt community-wide. Of course, all of the after-school programs in Oak Harbor School District are provided by the levy, so this is just one way for us to give back to the community for what they've given to us.
The best part about being a member in the student ambassador program is just being helpful and kind.
For me, it's when you are recognized, when you are walking down the halls. When kids give you a hello or a simple wave, it's a really good feeling.
At OHE, we are respectful, responsible, caring, and safe.
That story makes me wish I could go back to fifth grade.
Wait, aren't you in fifth grade?
What I mean is I wish I had another year to start the ambassadors club at my school.
Right. Don't forget to follow us on Facebook and check out our other videos on the school district website.
Until next time, stay in touch.
And keep growing higher.
Well, this is one of several stories that you can find on our website and on YouTube highlighting some of the great ways that our community's investment are making a difference in the lives of our students. And I'm going to get us onto our next slide somehow here. There we go. All right. So to close this evening, I've talked with you, I've shared with you a number of success stories of students and how our community's investment has changed their lives. But in our schools, every day, we have about 5,800 students, each one of them with the same potential for success, the same opportunities ahead of them, if we can just help them unlock and realize that potential. So this evening, I'd like to share a song with you. I actually sang this song for our staff at the very beginning of the school year, and while I'm singing, you're going to get a chance to see a video. And these are some of our students, and it's really imagining the potential that lies in each one of them, and thinking about how our community's support will help us unlock I can change the world with my own two hands. Make it a better place with my own two hands. Make it a kinder place with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. I can make peace on earth with my own two hands. And I can clean up the earth with my own two hands. And I can reach out to you with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. Gonna make it a brighter place with my own two hands. Gonna make it a safer place with my own two hands. Gonna help the human race with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. And now I can hold you in my own two hands. And I can comfort you with my own two hands. But you gotta use your own two hands. Use your own, use your own two hands. Use your own, use your own two hands. With our own, with our own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. With my own, with my own two hands. Well, we have the opportunity as a community to continue the investment that has really made such a remarkable difference in the lives of our students. And coming up here on Valentine's Day, believe it or not, it's going to be a levy replacement election, the opportunity for our community to renew its commitment and to sustain these success stories for the future generation. And I know this evening, the city council is considering a resolution to endorse this levy, and I know the individuals on this council, and I'm sure that you'll be here to support our schools, and I am truly, truly grateful for that. And so, on behalf of all of us at Oak Harbor Public Schools, I want to wish you a Happy New Year, and thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Gibbon. We, one more hand. I can tell you on behalf of the city that we're very proud of the partnership we have with the school district and can't thank you enough for what you're doing and your hard work. Thank you. Okay. Item number three, citizen comment, period. Citizens may comment on subject of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So we're open for citizen comment, period. Going once, twice? Okay, that didn't take long. That 15 minutes, we picked up. Now we're on to the consent agenda, item number four. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted with, well, we'll approve them, but I think we do have a couple of people here tonight. And if the council were so, would so choose, we could, we could pull their names off and let them do a three-minute speech? Oh, I'm kidding. Actually, I'm kidding. We don't want to do that to our very own council member, Jim Campbell. Thanks for your appointment to the disability board if it passes. I'm sorry, councilperson Muns, did you?
Well, I wanted to pull consent agenda 4C because she is in the audience and let her be introduced, please.
Perfect. So, if there's no other, we'll just, we'll approve the other items on the consent agenda as presented. And I agree, we have our arts commission position number nine, very own Therese Kingsbury in the, in the audience here. And hi Therese, and thank you very much for, for your, did you want her to speak for three minutes? Is that what you're, no, no, okay.
If she could introduce herself, and I believe her husband's also with her tonight.
Her husband is here, that'd be great. Would you introduce yourself and your husband?
I'm Therese Kingsbury, and this is my husband, John. And I think somebody I know sent me an application, and I thought I'd fill it out and see what happened. And when I got accepted, I was a little bit blown away. I'm very excited. I've got a lot of energy and ideas, and I'm really excited about the art.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, should we approve her?
I move that we approve 4C, please.
Second.
Motion to approve by councilperson Muns and second by Servadius. 4C, art commission position number nine, Therese Kingsbury. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed after that? No, of course not. Okay, welcome. We'll send you your first item of business in the mail tomorrow. I'm kidding, that won't happen. Okay, council, or mayor, council staff comments. So I think I'm up actually first. I'd like to publicly thank my friend, Mr. Campbell, for managing the last meeting in my absence. He, he thought I was on my way from Olympia, and I was, but I didn't get here in time for any of the meetings, so thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate that. And I also wanted to make a comment. If I would have been here last, at that meeting, I would have commented, because I've had a couple of people talk to me about the article that was in the December 14th, 2016, Whidby News Times, and the headline of the article was "Town Doubles Mayor Salary." That's not Oak Harbor, by the way. I just want that to be known in Oak Harbor. My salary did not get doubled. So, few people thought it had, so they wanted me to work harder, and I said, "I'm not going to do that." So, I received a wonderful letter from Rear Admiral Mays for the donation of the Gary Oak Tree saplings, just thanking the city of Oak Harbor for donating 45 Gary Oak saplings which were planted near our child development centers and the Navy Lodge at Naval Air Station Whidby Island. It is my pleasure to accept the gift on behalf of the Navy. Please accept my heartfelt thank you for this donation, your thoughtfulness, generosity, and continued support of our sailors at Naval Air Station Whidby Island are greatly appreciated. Rear Admiral Mays. So that was not only very nice, it was, it's been passed along to staff, I think, at least once or twice. We've got a few on our staff in public works especially that have worked a lot of hours and put in a lot of time for that, so thank you very much. And finally, welcome home to our VAQ 130, the Zappers Squadron 130 returned home to Whidby after completing a seven-month deployment in support of Operation Inherent Resolve. So they got here just in time for the New Year's on December 30th, so welcome back, members of that squadron. And with that, I think I will pass the meeting along to council members. Does anyone have anything? Mayor Protim, would you like to?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to wish everyone Happy, Happy New Year, and I'm hoping that this will be another great year with many projects from public works, especially the biggest project of Oak Harbor, the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Oh, council, Councilman Servadius.
Thank you Mayor. Also, Happy New Year. A little public service announcement. Having had to replace two hose bibs on two different houses that I have, just a reminder to everyone with these cold temperatures, please remember to disconnect your hose. I did it once, thought I couldn't do it again, and yet I did, so it's easy enough to forget and leave those connected. Please go disconnect them and be a good neighbor. If you see your neighbors connected, wander over and meet them. And so you might want to unscrew that thing before it pops inside your house.
Good, good advice. Yes, council, councilman.
Yes, Happy New Year as well. And I also wanted to give a thank you to the Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce for putting on and organizing and sponsoring the ice skating event that happened last week. It was, it was really fun. I think it was successful. I hope we'll get an update maybe from the chamber in the future, I'm sure with their yearly presentation. My children had a great time, and there were a lot of people out there, and it was a fun thing for our city, so thank you to the chamber.
Yes, yes. Councilor Heisen.
Thank you Mayor. I just want to thank Dr. Gibbon for his presentation. When you can attach real people's stories to statistics, it really hits home. It's, it's a really effective way to get your message across, so thank you for translating that in such a way. It, it helps make sense of all the numbers and the graphs. And I, I've heard this before, but I'm just astonished that we went from 77 to 91 percent graduation rate in three years. And that is not a fluke. When kids feel disconnected from their communities and not valued by their communities, that's a huge risk factor for all kinds of issues, I mean, all kinds of issues. And so, when the community sends a message that these kids are valued by their community, even if, you know, we don't all personally know them, by passing things like levies, by showing up to football games and concerts, when, when kids feel like they are valued and connected by their community, they have higher graduation rates, and they have higher college rates, and they become productive members of society. And so, all of these little things that we as a community do to support our kids in our schools has a massive, massive ripple effect, and as we saw on the graph just in three years. It's, I think it's a real testament to the work that, that you and the school board and all the booster clubs and really the whole, the whole city has done. So, thank you. You will continue to have my unwavering support, and I expect to see that graduation number to keep going up. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Heisen. Anyone else? Okay? One, twice, okay. City Administrator, Dr. Merriman.
Thank you. I would just like to welcome everybody back to 2017 and bring in the new year. I'm just going to go right to Brett Arvidson and his presentation on the treatment plan.
Good evening. It's time for our Clean Water Facility Project Update. We'd like to think that, you know, over the holidays, it was kind of quiet and calm, but actually it wasn't for a lot of reasons. Right now, we are in the process of demolishing the old RBC plant, and you can see that's a big hole in the ground. It's been tough dirt conditions for other reasons I'll talk about in a second, but we are getting through it slowly but surely. Recent activities, our design has been chugging right along. We have started the wind jammer activities for the design. We do have an open house, public open house scheduled for January 12th at Skagit Community College. We are sending out a postcard citywide to invite people to come in and give comment. So that's going to be a fun event. So, that's going to be a fun event. We're also continuing to work on our SCADA software development. That's kind of in the nerdy side of things, but it's a very important part of our project as we started to think about starting it up. Construction, we continue to place concretes on GMPs number seven and number eight. Still haven't done anything on number 10. Our self-perform work is, still remains ahead of schedule and below eight labor estimates. We're about 61 out of 210 pours right now, so we're about a third of the way there with the concrete. A little slow with the holidays and the cold weather. Right now, the cold weather is slowing things down because we just can't pour when it's just cold. We've continued, I said earlier, continued demolition of the RBC plant. We are preparing a GMP number 11 amendment to present to you. I'll talk a little more about that in a second. We did send the notification letter to the Navy about transferring the lagoon back to them. Recent activities, City B Street has been reopened. And unfortunately, over the holidays, we did discover another set of human remains. We were able, with our MOA process, to pretty much resolve that very quickly. We still have some more ways to go, unfortunately. But I would want to compliment both the state, our archaeologists, and Gideon Kaufman. We're able, we made the discovery on Friday, and we were able to get clearance to go back to work on Wednesday. This is over the Christmas holiday. So, kudos to the, to the gang for doing that. I was actually on a ferry to Port Townsend when the discovery, so Gideon had to come out and take care of it. So, but we still have some more to do, unfortunately. Funding, I'm not going to talk too much about this in the next month or two. We have executed the loan amendment and are starting to hopefully get some payments in this week. And we have the, the 218 loan application, but we won't be hearing anything till the spring, so there probably won't be much going on with that for a few months. GMP number 11, now, this is the GMP that we hope to present at the next council session. This, we've called it in the past, non-processed structures, but you're going to be here called superstructure construction. This consists of the administration and maintenance building, which we've always talked about. It also includes the above-ground superstructure, basically the walls and roof of the membrane building, the headworks, the cell cells building, the blower, electrical areas. Recently included is, a lot of these things were co, like having one, two separate roof contractors wasn't good, so it was easier just to, to mix them all together. We did bid it in 20 packages. There are some allowances for window etching, security systems, order control, and some other allowances I'll talk about in a minute. Also, it includes the final stone columns, which were actually bid over a year ago now as part of GMP number four. We actually had a price extension, so we just were able to use that price. It also include NSS and the specified general conditions through December 2018, hopefully substantial completion. Our bid results were a bit checkered. We, like I said, we put out 20 packages to bid. We received multiple bids, bids on eight packages. We received one bid per package on seven packages. We received no bids on five packages. Good news is, we actually had local contractors successful on four of the bid packages. The lack of turnout was a bit disappointing, but it's probably not significant. What we're finding, what, as we were, we actually did a lot of promotion for this, but our jobs is larger than most local contractors. You see, there's nobody on the island that can handle it. And so, what was happening was, right now, it's a hot Seattle market, and we're kind of in, into the road on the island. And so, it was kind of combined with that as people had a lot of work available at, at the Seattle area. So, unfortunately, we saw a limited response to our bids. But looking at it, we are planning on moving forward, all bids, packages with single bids reviewed and considered competitive. Most of them are about where we expected. We had a couple that kind of surprised us, but we did some investigation. We feel they're legitimate. Packages without bids were mostly things like bridge cranes and fire control systems. We're probably going to put those in as allowances and follow a different procurement process. A lot of that stuff is very specialized. We can probably get multiple quotes, people just weren't bidding in a public environment. And so, we can probably get competitive prices from that, and we'll do it under self-perform where we can validate the prices. So, GMP number 11, it will total about $23 million. We will revise the project budget, and that will be presented at the January 17th council meeting with the GMP. Here's our schedule. It's pretty much like we showed last week. We're moving right along. We're keeping up with everything. Nothing's falling very much behind. Of course, we always have public outreach. You can reach us at oakharborcleanwater.org. You can give us a call at 914-7000, or call our city phone numbers, emails at treatmentplant@oakharbor.org. And we have a drop-in session next Friday. Any questions? Next Monday, excuse me.
Mayor Protim.
On that testing of the operation of the wastewater treatment plant, the scheduled later part of this year, would that be about November or December timeframe?
The SCADA will be implemented as we start the thing up, so we'll probably start seeing the actual screens and stuff through the year, but when we actually test it, we'll be in after the first of next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate the update. Is that it, Dr. Merriman? Okay, thank you. We have one ordinance that we'll get to in just a moment. I'll give the public a chance to speak if they'd like to. At that time, we ask you that you limit your comment, any comments you might have to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time. So, we are on to our last item, item number 7A, Resolution 17-01, endorse the Oak Harbor School District four-year replacement levy, proposition number one. So, is this being handled? That's it?
That's it.
Where, it's just that simple? We're, oh, great, oh, great. Well, I think we had a wonderful presentation earlier, and I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak before we... Yes, please come to the podium and just state your name, if you will.
My name is Brian Jones, and I'm an Oak Harbor resident, and I'm the Chair for Citizens for Better Schools. And I'm here today to support Dr. Gibbon and support our community by asking the council to please unanimously pass this resolution. And feel free to show your support by grabbing a yard sign on your way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else from the public? Okay, going once. So, council, how would you like to handle this? Councilor Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to speak in support of this. You know, when we moved here in the mid, late 90s, '97, there was a conversation we had, actually, I didn't have kids at that point in time, but there's, there's always been conversations about schools. And to me, even before I had kids, it was, it was a no-brainer that you support schools. They are, you're present because those conversations centered around, do we reside in Anacortes? Do we reside in Oak Harbor? And at that time, it was felt that maybe Anacortes had an edge in the school systems. That's clearly not the case anymore. So, kids are, you know, an investment in education is clearly our present, it's our future, because these are, as the presentation that Mr. Gibbon gave, these clearly are our future leaders, our future inventors, creators, and so, very, very proud to support this. In some of the conversations I've had about this process with people, one of the things I talk to them about is that this is just really renewing and maintaining things that we have brought back. And one of the things that I mentioned is hot lunch. And they just stop, and they look at me, and they're like, "What do you mean, hot lunch?" I'm like, there was a time, not very long ago, that there was no hot lunch served in the schools. And for people that are new, or maybe not, don't have kids in the current system, they just can't relate to that. So, that's just, you know, it, it takes care of everything from, you know, special, special education up to advanced placement, but little things like making sure a kid maybe before school gets breakfast, or they get the opportunity to have lunch if they choose at school, is, is one of the items that this is dealing with. So, to me, it's very important to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Lassinger.
Man, time flies when you're doing great things. I can't believe four years ago, I was up at the podium asking for you all's support. I can't believe that it's gone by so fast, and I'm honored to be here in this position now and being the one to give the support. Being involved in that levy four years ago was one of the most rewarding experiences that I've, I've ever been involved with in my entire life. I mean, I didn't realize it at the time because I didn't have kids in the school. I didn't, I wasn't involved in the school on a day-to-day basis. I did it more as a service, just, just to the community in general and for the city. But as the years have gone by, and I'm able to see firsthand, new books, new curriculum, programs that, that even my little elementary school kids can be a part of and have art and PE and music every week. And then to see all of the great facilities at the high school and the programs, and that those are maintained, and that they're going to be sustainable because of this, this levy, you know, all the way up until my kids can get into high school. So, you will always have my support. The school district is doing great things, and when I see that, I, I offer my support, and I, I thank you for all that you've done, and I'm really happy to, to be able to support you.
Anyone else? Councilor Muns?
I'll make the motion when we're ready.
Councilor, yes, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I fully support this Resolution 1701 endorsing the Oak Harbor School District four-year replacement levy. I have been supporting the school district in Oak Harbor, in my family too, since we arrived here more than 30 years ago. And I know that, we all know, that it takes civility to raise a child, and it takes a community to provide support for our children attending the Oak Harbor School. So, I fully support this levy for continuing providing funding and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilor Oenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to support this. Most of us, I think, agree that education is the great equalizer. And the little video that you ran up there, it really shows that education crosses all ethnic and economic lines, and it really balances out the opportunities for everybody. And I'm proud to be part of this city that has such a great education system in it. There are some things that the rest of the country could also take notice of Oak Harbor. This country is ranked, depending on which rating that you look at, between 17th and 14th internationally, ranking 48 countries. However, we do have a significant edge on incarceration. We actually rank number one in the world in prisoner incarceration, about three times what Russia has and significantly more than what China does. So, when we talk about being great, we have to talk about great education systems. That's where great really starts, and we have an opportunity to do this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Oenberg. Anyone else? Councilor Hyson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, Councilmember Servadius maybe intentionally or unintentionally used the word "investment," and that really resonated with me. This is, you know, they're throwing out numbers, and this is how much it's going to cost, but instead of looking at this as an expense, we should look at it for what it is, which is an investment. So, thank you for throwing that word out there. I'm going to keep that in mind.
Councilor Campbell?
I've not been here long enough to have any of my kids in the school system of Oak Harbor. I've only been here 16 years. I do know that I've got three in-laws who went to the high school system in Oak Harbor. We have a family story, and this is a little bit off, but this family story is, we have one young man who went to school, graduated in Oak Harbor. On the night of graduation, he and a buddy walked deception pass bridge on the rafters underneath. He is a lot smarter than that today. He has a PhD, and he's an, he's an instructor or a professor at the University of Utah in Logan, Utah. So, all these kids did accomplishments based on their education from the school system. I'm going to support this because I think it's, it's necessary that we support schools before we support anything else. Thank you.
Before I turn it over to Councilor Muns, I'd like to say just a couple of things. When I, I hate to admit this, but I came to Oak Harbor 43 years ago now, and I know I don't look that old. Anyway, one of, one of the sales points about Oak Harbor at that time was they were building a new high school. They were building a new high school in 1974. They were just finishing that high school. And that was 43 years ago. Since then, we have rebuilt that high school to a, just a wonderful, wonderful school. But I guess the biggest thing, I have the pleasure of, of getting to meet with Dr. Gibbon on a monthly basis, and I asked him two or three months ago to tell me the difference between going to school in Oak Harbor versus the other surrounding cities that we have, and, and, and why is Oak Harbor different? And I won't take any more of the time this evening, but if you want to hear a really good story, you should ask Dr. Gibbon that story. He's, he can, he can tell you the difference, and there is a big difference, and it's, it's just really a neat story. So, thank you again for everything that you do. And Councilor Muns, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve Resolution Number 17-01.
Second. Motion to approve Resolution 17-01 by Muns, second by Oenberg. No other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimous. Thank you again. Best of luck out there on Valentine's Day, and looking forward to it. Okay, we have no other business on our agenda tonight, so all in.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn?
Adjourn.
Adjourn? Adjourn? Adjourn?
That's a new one.
We got a second?
Establish a new language.
Motion by Oenberg, second by Servadius. To adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Adjourn it is?